And welcome to the Cedar Falls Regular City Council Meeting this January 15, 2018. I will now call this meeting to order and ask for a roll call from Madam Clerk, please.
Miller?
Here.
DeBoer?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Blanford?
Here.
Dara?
Here.
Whelan?
Here.
Green?
Here.
All members present, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Moving on to Item C is a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting, January 2nd.
So moved.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. Any agenda revisions, Madam Clerk?
I have no agenda revisions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on to Item E is a special order of business. E1 is a public hearing on the proposed FY18 to FY23 Capital Improvements Program for the CIP. Is there a motion received filed of proof of publication, please?
So moved.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. Any written objections filed with the city clerk?
I have no written objections on file, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I think I'm going to have Director Rodenbeck just give a brief introduction to the CIP.
Sure. Mayor, each year the city develops a five-year capital improvements plan. It's a plan that outlines major projects planned for the next five years and what the funding sources are for the various projects. The council did, on December 19th, actually held a special work session where they discussed priorities of the CIP. And then tonight at committee, council and planning and zoning commission members were here tonight, and a presentation was given that highlighted a few of the projects and just gave an overview of the process of developing the CIP. By state code of Iowa, we're required to hold a public hearing for CIP, and so that's what we're doing tonight.
Thank you very much. I will call out any oral comments from the crowd this evening relating to the public hearing on the CIP. I see a couple. Rosemary, if you can come up, sure. Name an address, if you would, please, and...
Rosemary Beach 5018, Sage Road, Western Homes. I'm not sure I'm in the right CIP. Is this the one on South Main or is this the one from going from Sixth Street to down to South Main?
Well, this is the CIP in general where...
Okay.
But there's projects, I believe, involved, or Jennifer, if you can help out again in terms of something specific in the CIP.
Because I said one thing on both things that I just wanted to throw out here.
Sure.
So I don't know which one I'm throwing it out in.
Well...
Well, actually, on the CIP, we would have a project, the reconstruction of Main Street, so that is on here. So if there were questions about that particular project...
Sure, go ahead on that, and then we'll move on.
Well, on Main Street, coming from when you're... That's not going to get done for about five years, right?
Roughly.
Okay. What I'm just asking that the city look at the fact of since it's going to take a while before you attack that project, that you might think about going along and blading off some of the bumps. About in the 18th Street area where the fire station is, there is a bump, and there's bumps on the other side that are really pretty significant. And if we're going to live with that street for another five years or three years or whatever before you're going to start on it, it would just be nice if you'd kind of go down the street to where the plan might be and see if you can improve it for us without getting into major costs. So that was one of my questions. Then the other one was on the South Main Street where the sewer project is going through. And if I am correct, it's going somewhere in the neighborhood of the Dog Park across in that neighborhood. Okay, some years ago, I came to the council and asked them to look at where you come down South Main and it takes that nice little curve there and goes off. And for people who live out there, you know that a lot of people go off that. And the ruts on the side of the sidewalk get very deep. There was tracks in the snow the other morning that were headed off to the bridge. And I was told at that time that they didn't want to do anything. They did come and grade it twice during the summer and fill it with sand, which didn't last very long. But I was told at that that if... That this project was coming up, that something would happen for... It goes onto the trail, the bike trail, where there would be a cement pad for parking, and that could be fixed. And I'm just asking for that to be re-looked at. I'm not sure whose bailiwick that falls with in anymore. But if they're going to be treating that part of the South Main and the trail area, that I was told, as I said, that they would look at it. Maybe some of you remember when I was there that year and asked for it. It just is a safety issue for people. Like with the snow, you really can't tell where that little piece of you're driving on goes off into the outside edge. And the other thing that I came some years ago and asked for was to have all of South Main one... One, just not 25, not 30, but all 35. And again, we... You see, at that point, it was 25 from Main Street, and you raised it to 30. The council raised that little piece to 30 till you get up... Let's see. You start now 30 on University and go to about the Dog Park or a little bit beyond. And then you go to 35. That had been 25, so they went up five miles an hour. And that's been probably, I don't know, I... People here were on that council at that time, three years, four years. And I'm wondering with fixing that a bit, we can't go up to 35 all the way. It is so hard to stay at 30 and you come to the... Excuse me, the 35. And we're not policed as much as we used to be, but there are still police cars out there. And since it's going to be a major route, excuse me, through that area for quite some time, I would think it would be nice if we would just have it. So you begin at University, you go to the end to Green Hill, and it's 35. So those are three things I'm asking for out there, my little piece of the world. And they don't have a lot to do with money or anything else, but just convenience for your citizens. So thank you and welcome to the new people on the council. We're glad to have you.
Thank you, Rosemary. I think I can speak with the South Main since that is being delayed. We are looking at fixing those bumps and those divots upcoming, correct?
We have some areas included in our project. Actually, we're kicking off tonight with the restoration and reconstruction where we're looking to help with some of those areas so that it makes it through a couple more years.
And then with the sewer project, I know that's relatively speaking in the CIP. Was there anything else adding to that with the road that does angle off there towards the bottom of the hill?
I think that we'll have to look at that. I can't speak offhand if we added any shoulder paving to that project or if that parking lot was going to be paved. I don't know. I know that when that was first brought up, we talked with Public Works a little bit about different things that could be done there, so we'll have to look into that again.
Okay, thank you. And I saw another hand go up beforehand. Ms. Pop?
Good evening. My name is Penny Pop. I live at 4805 South Main Street. Tonight, I am addressing project number 80, Green Hill and Main Intersection Improvements. I'm speaking on behalf of the residents of Eldorado Heights and South Main Street. At the last city council meeting, I summarized the history of this project, most notable the length of time it has spent on the list of unmet needs. In thinking about how to emphasize the importance of funding this project was, my first thoughts were to stand in silence for the next four minutes. To demonstrate how deafening the silence was for waiting for a response from the city for such an extended period of time, what argument would be good enough to break the silence? The traffic issues, safety, and concerns in the area of Green Hill and Main have compounded over the years as the residents have waited. Aggressive residential growth has occurred. Over the next two years, substantial commercial growth will have a debilitating effect on the traffic flow in this area. The importance of correct, proper information and data for this intersection is critical. Temporary and permanent solutions must be achieved for the safety and well-being of all. The reliance of any information provided by questionable traffic studies would be alarming. Errors in street classification and the effects of minor streets in the area are omitted. We ask the city to follow a strict interpretation of Iowa statewide urban design guidelines and ASHTO in response to these errors as it has done in the past for proposed projects. In 2011, traffic issues and concerns were the hot bit of discussion for the proposed Casey's project. While Casey's eventually withdrew the project due to driveway alignment issues with Balboa, the city engineer at the time expressed major concern over traffic and access issues on South Main. The addition of a main driveway access within 200 feet of Green Hill was unacceptable and unsafe, thus supporting a strict interpretation of the guidelines. Over the past several months, for the commercial development proposal at the same location, broad interpretation of the guidelines have been applied. Close enough seems good enough for this city. We ask the city to follow a strict interpretation of the guidelines to ensure that proper improvements are made without further expenditures occurring due to poor planning. For over a decade, the residents of the Eldorado Heights and South Main have waited patiently. The city must respond in kind, provide the best possible improvements for the growth you have anticipated, acknowledged, and planned for. Now, Green Hill and Main Intersection Improvements are not funded yet. Anticipated start is in 2020 with finish in 2021. It may not happen then either. To keep this project in the forefront, I can provide an argument for funding for this project every session, if you'd like, similar to the argument I made tonight. Until it's actually funded, it's up to you. The silence must be broken, actions must occur, and the city needs to fund this project sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pop. To the previous speaker, Jen or Stephanie, would you... Or to the engineer, John, I think we addressed this at the committee meeting in terms of the potential plans as it relates to the CIP at Main and Green Hill?
Yes, I can speak to that really quick and just mention that again. So currently, our plan is to take a look. We'd like to take a look at the entire Green Hill corridor from, well, probably Hudson to Cedar Heights, Cedar Heights, just to get an idea, a better idea of what this corridor should look like in the future. So we're looking at doing an RFP, Request for Proposal, in the next month with the priority in that proposal being taking a look, near-term look, for low-hanging fruit, small near-term improvements we can make in the next year at Green Hill and Main. We really don't know what that would be at this point. We need to study that. We need to look at that. But it is currently a priority for the city and the whole corridor, not just that intersection. So we are planning to move forward with that.
Right, thank you, John. As it relates to CIP and the public hearing, any further comments from the public? Hearing seeing none, I will declare the hearing closed. Item 2 is a resolution approving and adopting the FY18 to FY23 Capital Improvements Program. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. I'll open it up to council discussion, if there's any. Requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item 3 is a resolution declaring an official intent under Treasury regulation to issue debt to reimburse the city for certain original expenditures paid in connection with specified projects. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, and again, open to council for any questions or comments. Requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item M is new business. F1 is a consent calendar. The following items will be acted upon by a voice vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or the public requests an item to be pulled separately for discussion. Any such request from council? From the public? Mr. Wykoff?
What item, sir? Item B.
Item B? Anyone else? I'll now summarize the consent calendar less. Item B. Item A is receive and file the plans for the 2018 street construction project, and Item C is approving applications. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar minus B?
So moved. Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. I'll now read through Item B and put it on the table. It is receive and file the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the Highway 58 and Viking Road project. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Now open up to council and to Mr. Wykoff. Please keep in mind, Mr. Wykoff, as it relates to the consent calendar, the germaneness of this topic is to receive and file the plans, specs, and form of contract.
Right, right. And that's where I'm going with this. Just wanted to say a lot of sincere sympathies for the families that passed away Friday night. I think the $24 million that was alluded to on 58 and Viking Road, that's... That is not going to stop the kind of accidents that happened Friday night. I didn't say my name, Larry Wykoff, 4241, East Park Road, the great city of Cedar Falls. I just hope that everybody, everybody in all the cities drives respectfully and within the law, 30 miles an hour, whatever, so that we can all get to our destinations safely.
Thank you, Mr. Wykoff. Any further comments from the public? This is on the table, council. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. Item 2 is a resolution calendar. The following items will be acted upon by a roll call vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or the public requests an item to be pulled separately. Any such request from council?
Item A.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Mayor, item M?
Yeah.
Yes, as in Foxconn.
I wanted to pull R and make a comment on I.
R and comment on I. Anyone else from the public? Hearing and seeing none, I will go over the resolution counter minus F as in Frank, I, and R. Items A through D are personnel items. Item E is a resolution approving and authorizing engagement relative to financial advisory services. G is approving and authorizing execution of a professional service agreement for digital aerial imagery services. I is authorizing the purchase of video production vehicle relative to cable television production activities. J is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a contract for asphalt shingle recycling. K is approving and authorizing execution of an agreement relative to the water reclamation painting project. L is approving releases of temporary easements in conjunction with the 2016 street reconstruction project. M is a resolution approving and adopting the plans for the Highway 58 and Viking Road project. N and O are resolutions approving and authorizing execution of a grant in aid agreement with the State Historical Society of Iowa relative to a certified local government grant project for nomination of the Wild Historic District to the National Register of Historic Places and for scholarships to attend the National Historic Preservation Caucus. P is approving a central business district site plan on East Fourth Street. Q is approving a College Hill neighborhood overlay zoning district site plan for installation of a drive-through on College Street. S is a resolution setting February 5th as the date of public hearing on the proposed plans for the 2018 street construction project. And T is setting February 5th as the date of public hearing on a proposal to undertake a public improvement for the West First Street Reconstruction Project and authorize acquisition of private property for the said project. Is there a motion to approve the resolution counter minus those items polled, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council? Requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Circling back to item F, I will read the item. Resolution approving and authorizing execution of an employee assistance services agreement with Covenant Medical Center, Inc., Covenant Clinic, EAP, relative to the employee assistance program. Is there a motion, please?
Second. Or motion, yes.
Motion second?
Can't do both. Second.
Okay. Motion second. It's on the table. Mr. Green, did you have a comment or just want to pull the item?
Yes, Mr. Ray, I just had a question on this. With the statement within the documentation that says that we're switching from a flat annual fee to a per-call payment, and it has an upper cap, per-employee of 20 sessions per year. So it says that more than 20 sessions could be authorized, but it doesn't say who grants the approval for that. And I just had a question, since it could be an open-ended busy point check for services.
Sure, be happy to check with that. Jennifer, do you have anything on that?
I think it's one of those things that, one, because we were switched to a per-fee, we think that's going to be more cost-effective. But in saying that, we wanted to put a cap on it, so we didn't kind of get it, let it get out of control either. But it would be one of those things that it would probably be the, I don't know if I want to say therapist, for lack of a better word, that would probably come back to the city and say, hey, I think this is someone that needs additional sessions. And, you know, maybe they're getting, you know, maybe one additional or two additional, and then we would look at that and grant that. Now, I just wanted to point out, through our EAP services, it is all actually confidential. So when people use that service, we don't know who that employee is, and so they just provide us numbers, you know, like you had 10 people that did this or whatever. So I just wanted to point that out. But we would probably just look and see, you know. So it would probably come through my area in terms of our legal or human resource area that we would look at that.
Any further questions, Mr. Green?
Yes, on that, on the same subject, I'm just curious as to what type of employee assistance we're looking at primarily. Is it therapy, sessions with people who are having issues that work for the city?
Yep, that's exactly what it is, Dave. You know, sometimes people might... It could be a variety of things that are going on, and I think it's just a way that the city's able to, you know, help an employee who might be going through, you know, whether it's some personal issues, things related to work, whatever it is, that it's an ability to, you know, try to get them some help and...
How about mental illness or alcoholism, things like that?
Well, I think some of it is also, you know, I think we see this as probably a little bit of a, I don't know if I want to say short term, maybe it could be a first step. Obviously, if it got to a point that it's a much serious issue that we would need to address, then we maybe have to look through a different type of, you know, whether we needed to send them to something different that was more specific.
Okay, but that decision's possible. Thank you.
Anything further from council on this item? It is on the table. It requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item I reads, "Resolution approving a revised concept of adding pickleball courts at Orchard Hill Park as recommended by the Parks and Rec Commission." Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion approved.
Motion second, and I just have a comment, I believe, Mr. Green.
Yeah, I simply wanted to take the opportunity to thank our staff and to thank the Park and Rec Commission for taking the opportunity to alter the plans that not only allowed us to build the pickleball courts, but allowed us to keep the tennis courts and rebuild the basketball court. And I also wanted to thank all the private fundraising that made this possible.
Excellent, thank you. Anything further from council on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I've got a question for the tennis courts. It says in the CIP document that it's... The tennis courts were listed as beyond repair and resurfacing. So what's the plan to change those? Is this similar to the basketball court, where you can just take care of it on your own without major expenses?
That was originally the concept, Mr. Green, was that the tennis courts, they would be expensive to repair. They are repairable. So the thought was, well, if we're going to put pickleball courts in there, let's just eliminate the tennis courts. However, we believe that the tennis courts can be saved, but there will be a cost to it, probably close to $25,000 to save those courts.
Thank you. Will that be done at the same time then, Mark?
I would say probably not. We probably would be looking at renovating the tennis courts in 2019. We also have some improvements to make to the Pete Court, so we would try to do those at the same time.
Anything further from council? Requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on to item R, it reads, "Resolution approving University Avenue, Highway 58 interchange reconstruction project in the Cedar Falls Unified Highway 58 corridor urban renewal area." Is there a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second. Mr. Burd, did you have a comment?
I had a question. Was there any reason to do this other than funding?
I'll defer to staff on that in terms of the question.
Any reason to use the TIF funds you're asking, or what do you mean to have this resolution?
For this resolution, is it only so that you can allocate the funding from the TIF district?
The urban renewal plan includes the ability to use some of the TIF funding on University Avenue and Highway 58 interchange area. What we do with some of our bigger projects, just to make sure it's known that we're following through on what's in our plan, is once we bid those projects, we bring forward this resolution to make it clear that we do intend to use the TIF funding for it. So while it's been in our CIP, it's also been in the urban renewal plan. We use this measure on some of the larger funding projects that we have going on.
But there is no other development that would be considered urban renewal other than the rebuilding of the roadway?
We plan to use it on the... On doing the roadway, the infrastructure related to that as well as the road itself.
Any further discussion or comments from council? This, again, is on the table. Requires a roll call vote, please.
Six voting aye, one voting nay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on to item 3, it reads, "Past and ordinance amending Chapter 26 of the Code of Ordinance as relative to change in the speed limit on University Avenue from Hudson Road to the east city limits from 45 miles per hour to 35 miles per hour upon its first consideration." Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. I will just open this up to anyone in the public. Hearing seeing none, open it up to council.
Mr. Mayor?
Well, I just had a quick question. The staff report indicated that the report had recommended it from Main to the east, but yet this recommendation is from Hudson Road. So I was curious, why was there a change between what you're recommending and what the report had recommended? Is there...
Because the report very clearly said Main to the east city limits.
I believe that that's verbiage we found in the ordinance itself. There were a couple of sections defined for a speed limit on University, and it was confusing, and it really wasn't matching what we were doing. So it's, it's really more of a technicality to just make this consistent in the ordinance with what's also in the field.
Is it already 35 from Main to Hudson?
That's, that's my understanding, yes.
Mr. Green, did you have a comment?
Yes, sir, just with the, the change, I'm assuming that City Council had already previously approved the speed change as part of the design plans. So is this just, just understand what's going on here? Is this just to do housekeeping on the code then, based on what the council approved?
It seemed to me when I read through it, Stephanie or John, did you have any input in terms of why sort of the all-encompassing now since the speeds change anyway with the design of the University Avenue?
It was something we found in the ordinance that wasn't matching up with what's actually in the field. So we wanted the ordinance to be consistent, and then, of course, that ties back to enforcement and being able to actually write a ticket if you're going over that amount, if the ordinance isn't in agreement, you have a conflict there. So it was just about making everything consistent.
Very good. It's been motion second, this requires a roll call vote, please.
A voting aye, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Item G, is there a motion to allow bills and payroll?
Second.
Motion second, this requires a roll call vote, please.
A voting aye, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Item H, City Council referrals. Does council have any items for referral this evening? Mr. Blanford?
Mr. Mayor, we had a request from one of the residents to look at the speed limit on Main Street, I think, south of Main, going towards Green Hill. I was wondering if Director Olson and Director Sheets' teams could look at that and see if that's warranted.
It's technically per referral to have staff move towards that. Is there a second, is that a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second for that study?
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion from council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carry. Any other items from council for? Hearing seeing none, any City Council updates? I do know we have our NISG student representative, Kate Olstead, does have a brief update for us in terms of what's going on at UOI.
Yeah, I just wanted to briefly mention and make everyone aware. We didn't have classes today at the University of Northern Iowa for Martin Luther King Junior Day, and many students took that opportunity to participate in a service event where, I'm not sure the exact number of students were involved, but I know it was quite a bit, and the goal was to package 15,000 meals for the Northeast Iowa Food Bank, and from what I'm told, that was very successful. So I just thought I would share that with everyone in the community.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add to that, it's, with the students, there was also a significant number of staff and faculty and community members in that as well, and it was just fantastic to see so many groups come together, get to know each other a little. And a huge part of the UOI strategic plan is community engagement and connectivity. So these sorts of activities between our local organizations and the school certainly would love to promote more of those in the future.
Great, thank you for that, for you both. Moving on to item J is public forum. Speakers will have one opportunity to speak for up to five minutes on topics germane to city business. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak tonight? See a couple hands coming up, maybe a third one there. Ms. Pop, if you'd like to come up?
Hello, Jan, I'm Penny Pop at 4805 South Main Street. Now, speaking about patience and collaboration, the Eldorado Heights neighborhood enjoys a park that includes the extensive trail system that winds through the neighborhood of Cedar Falls. Two signs christen the boundaries of the park, one visible from Green Hill and the other at the entrance from the neighborhood. Both signs are in good condition. However, upon closer examination, the word acquired looks suspect. Now, phonetically, it's correct, but the neighbors are kind of a stickler for detail. The word acquired is misspelled, it should be A-C-Q-U-I-R-E-D. Now, an easy fix and a cost-effective solution can be used to fix the sign. The city can accept help from the residents, perhaps a Girl Scout, or some of our talented neighborhood, our neighbors in Eldorado Heights, or even the expert woodworkers at Western Homes. A plaque made to screw over the current spelling of acquired would suffice. Cost-benefit analysis for those in our financial department, cost to the city, zero. Cost of portraying our city as educated, priceless. And the benefits, an easy lesson on collaboration from all stakeholders. Problem solved. Another fine example of our educated and talented citizens all working together to grow and maintain this wonderful city we call home. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pop.
Did you need the display or the exhibit?
We have it recorded, so we should be good, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
I might ask who was in charge of spelling back in that day, but maybe it's her or not. Mr. Wykoff, if you'd like to come up, sir?
Okay, Larry Wykoff, still at 4241, East Park Road, great city of Cedar Falls. Thank you Vikings for winning yesterday. And happy birthday to Martin Luther King Jr., very much, very much so. General observation, Wednesday, got to the roundabout out here on Cedar Heights Drive and Viking Road, seems to be a lot of attention there, and the guy ahead of me had a bent tailgate, and I'm thinking, wonder what that means? The next thing I knew, he had stopped for a car way up on the hill on the south side of Viking Road. And I'm thinking, why, after I laid on the horn, why would you stop, you know, that far away? But he stopped, I didn't have a collision, but it just goes to prove, all these little near misses don't get recorded on the problem with roundabouts. This afternoon, I had a little time, took lunch down to my wife in Waterloo, and it started in Cedar Falls, and I got out to University Avenue and had to go right to go left to Waterloo. And, folks, it's just, it's just very complicated, and I know I can figure it out, but we didn't have this problem before University Avenue went over budget by twice as much as what was proposed. The third thing I wanted to talk about was, Green Hill Road is now close to being used as a substitute for University Avenue. Once that barricade comes down beyond Hudson Road, there's going to be a lot of people that go through University, or Green Hill Road to get to University Avenue way out there by where the old drive-in theater was. And, I don't know, it just seems like we're transferring traffic from one highway to another highway, and where does it all end? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wykoff. Mr. Manning, do you have your hand up?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just for clarity's sake, University Avenue did not go over budget by twice the amount originally proposed, correct?
That confirmed, Jennifer or Stephanie?
The concept plan anticipated a cost of, I believe it was 32 million, and that did not include some elements that we had, like the frontage roads as a separate CIP item at the same time. I don't know the amount offhand. So when we combined those projects, then we dealt with some stormwater issues in doing the final design, that's where the overall estimate then was increasing, and I'm sorry, I'll back up. Also, we had the phase one estimates, we applied that information to the entire project, and that's where we came in at, I believe it was 42.
Thank you. Mr. Manning?
Good evening, my name is Bob Manning, I live at 2908 West Third Street in Cedar Falls. I'm here as a spokesman from the Cedar Trails Partnership, and as many of you, I have a raspy voice, pardon me for that. Three months ago, we appeared before the council when you were talking about the Main Street reconstruction from Sixth Street to Water Road or University Avenue in that vicinity. And we said that the Cedar Trails Partnership had, had had some conversations about that being part of the adding of bike trails to the Main Street location. Since that time, we subsequently had another gentleman come a couple weeks later and address that situation, and who's also on our board, but the Cedar Trails Partnership asked me to clarify that I'm to be the spokesman to your group, the intermediary, and after a spirited discussion, we did think that what the city was proposing on the Main Street with the bike lanes was appropriate. We had some personal objections, and just because we're a bike trail, we didn't want to automatically endorse a bike trail without thinking through it and how it affected the city. In retrospect, we thought that the, that the city planning department had come up with a good plan, and we did further endorse that by unanimous consent at our Cedar Trails Partnership meeting. But because there was some confusion, I had a couple people ask me if I would come back before you and just clarify our position. We were concerned because there's a bike trail on Clay Street and a bike trail on State Street, and we were thinking that there's three bike trails out of four blocks, they're out of four parallel lanes. And, and that is correct, but some of those are just temporary, they don't go all the way through. Clay Street, although it's bike, bike lane marked, it's very hilly, and the bicyclists generally avoid hills whenever we can. Those experienced bicyclists like myself, we always avoid hills. So I want to clarify that, and so that the council knew that as you look at that down the road in the future, that we are supportive of the bike lane on Main Street as you proposed, and we would want to endorse that. Secondly, I'm before you tonight because this is the time of our annual grants program through the Cedar Trails Partnership. We collect dues and have some fundraising activities, and our whole intention is to be able to have funds that we can put back into projects in the communities. And so unusual for a group perhaps to come before you and say, we have money that we want to put out to the city of Cedar Falls and other communities, and although it's small dollars compared to what you deal with, it is part of what our membership is challenged with doing, and that is trying to fund enhancements to the existing trail system that we have. So we're here tonight, our grants program is looking for grants from communities. Things that we've done for the city of Cedar Falls have been some of the signage that's been out there and other things, we like to think were a little bit of the icing on the cake. And so we would encourage your, your city staff that where it's appropriate to apply for any of the, the small dollars and grant funds that we have available, and our members just say thank you for the beautiful trail system that we have in the Cedar Valley.
Thanks for your comments, Bob. Anyone further in the crowd for this evening's public comment? Hearing and seeing none, next item is that there's a movement, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you for this evening's, watching this evening's City Council meeting.